Okay, I'll entertain the motion to approve consent agenda.
I'll second.
Motion made by Leon, seconded by Tia for the discussion. All those in favor? Motion carries five nothing. Thank you very much. Welcome back, everybody. This is our first meeting that has not been 100% conducted on Zoom. We are enjoying some big space here at the community center. So the swap show will resume its normal meetings and the public is more than welcome to, as always, interact. We have a few members in the audience as well as information that can be had through the Zoom meeting. If you have any questions, as always, we have two moderators tonight. We have Tia and Joe moderating the Zoom platform. And I would mention that because it is now time for public comment. If there are any members out of the audience that wish to address the board, any issues that are currently in front of us on the agenda, please signify with your hands, click on your emoji, whatever you need to do to grab our attention, and we will attempt to communicate with you. So with that said, is there anybody out there that wants to say anything in the public commentary? I'll give it another few seconds. Anybody, Joe? All right, there will be another opportunity for public commentary number two of the conclusion of tonight's meeting. So don't feel mustered to be able to. With that said, we will jump right into new business. Discussion on item number two, Music on Main Street. The French is in the audience and will be addressing the board as well as getting some information.
Thank you very much. We've just been talking to the board about the B path as still in September. We can count down, hold them downtown on September, I guess.
Okay, just for the sake of the minute taker, just take your hand.
Um, Charlie, the plan.
Hi.
I'm also a key member. Uh, we just wanted to make sure that if we're not on September, it's been canceled or delayed till next year. If we were wanting to be able to allow, he allowed the whole of the month to this year, September 19th.
So don't worry, we can have the plan as. So you are requesting permission from the board to select under the heads to whether or not to proceed with the plan on September 19th for Music on Main. Do I have that correct?
I believe so.
All right, excellent. Well, I think everybody on the board is intimately familiar with what Music on Main Street is. It is the greatest. Play it by the weather, occasion.
No, I share the funds.
Uh, so, um, is there any statement from the board? I don't know where that would fall for governor's order. You don't like this stuff, so.
Well, the governor's orders are always going to have to play a part because if things start increasing, we understand that he's going to pull some things back. So that's all going to be conditional. However, we have even the concert committee approval to move forward with their exercises. So knowing that we've advised them to move forward and the governor is lifting restrictions, I feel that whatever thing that we have scheduled should move forward and we can address whatever issues or concerns we'll have.
Yes, I got a little lift as to why the committee is asking us to make the decision. Usually the committee makes the decision and come to us to put a stamp on that, but I have no objection. I have no objection.
Would you start picking up the bands and all the vendors already?
I believe he has probably still got a workload to do with the vendors. The whole thing was, I believe, without the special request of committee, was that we're going to have an active check for this to be canceled or we'll send the check back.
Further questions from the board?
Uh, September 19th, right?
It's a mostly open air event, so I hope that.
Mary Ellen has spoke that if we need, we will just, again, outside masks, whatever the governor just said, we're at at that point. But we just wanted to make sure that the town was still back in the process.
Leon?
Hit the microphone. Are we? Are we still talking about orange fence and all that other good stuff that we were talking about before?
No, that was for the concert. This is Music on Main.
Ah, okay, excuse me.
Well, thank you for the concern because it's always nice to hear what everyone has to answer questions. Okay, uh, somebody want to put a motion together?
I'll make a motion to have the Music on Main Street workshop committee move forward with hosting Music on Main on September 19th or any other big thing.
Second your motion.
Second.
Second your vote, Leon. Further discussion. All those in favor? Motion carries five nothing. Go forward and do the best you can. Maybe a little last direct in contract, but this could be canceled at any time. Thank you to the volunteers who always help out there. Next up on the new business is item number three, discussion of the swap shop, Joe.
So Superintendent Vergeron Kristen is a colleague, she can't be here for our engagement. Um, but her and I have been working on a plan on how to get the swap shop back open. Um, so they're the PowerPoint that's in the packet. I'm just going to briefly talk about it so everybody has an idea what's going on. Um, so the idea is to reopen the swap shop on a volunteer basis, primarily on Sunday. Um, the hope is, is if we have enough volunteers to add that second day in there, we will allow drop offs to happen during the meet on the Tuesday to Thursdays. Um, but there will be any sky, if you go through anything, it's a fresh drop off procedure at that time. And then on Sundays, um, will be when the swap shop is open and then through the volunteer system. Um, so the swap shop opened this term for back in 2005. It's been consistently up and through this year, a man of a part-time position who's handling the swap shop. Um, what we're trying to accomplish with the swap shop avenue transfer station is basically want to create a clean, safe environment for medical residents to gather and swap stories as well as watchable, unwatchable usable goods. So again, we're just, we're trying to figure out the best way to fix this problem. So we do have some expectations for the volunteers that are in here. Um, the thought processes is they would present, submit a volunteer application. Um, when they submitted a volunteer application, it would be better to have a volunteer. We'll link them through a training process to Kristen. Uh, Kristen will educate them on what is viable and what's not. And again, you know, to us, this is probably the best way to go forward without actually putting staff manning this swap shop.
Do we have volunteers signed up? Do we have volunteers signed up?
Uh, Kristen has been collecting volunteers already. I think, you know, I think to go, it used to be open all four days. Um, on a volunteer basis, we don't want to get in a situation where we have no calls, no shows, volunteers, people not showing up. Um, so we want to start conservative and just like Sundays, Kristen thought would be the best day to start with. And then if one either on a Saturday or possibly on a Monday during the meet instead, um, because people who drop off on a Tuesday or Thursday, it's typically different than people who drop off on a weekend. So if more people are by the drop off.
So if you can drop off all four days, but the government takes stuff on Sunday.
That's correct. If you drop off all four days, you're going to be able to actually swap those on that Sunday.
That's what we have.
It will be, but that's the plan that she's presenting and I, so I'm confident that she feels her staff can manage that.
Well, we can always give it a shot. If we need to change it or adjust it, then we can report.
Correct.
So I was always throwing stuff away. And it's, as we thought we could. What was under that to make after Sunday? Oh, make a decision to keep it.
Further questions about the swap shop?
Just, um, we'd be getting up all the clear, we'd probably make a lot of people happier if we go from Saturday to Saturday.
I think, you know, again, if we get the volunteers, if they're going to be open, opening up as many as we can, we just want to make sure we have the volunteer basis that's able to support the details.
There's a big pile of all these little miniature garden.
Correct. And, and we're not really going to get into, I know in the past, the person managing the swap shop was responsible for checking stickers and things like that. We're not going to get into that right now. We're going to, there's great, maybe dealing with this swap shop. To start with Sundays. To start, if I go ahead, we're going to start moving forward to get the volunteers to make sure that it's available. Roll those one.
Further questions from the board? Yes, sir.
I am saddened to hear the fact that they're not going to bother about checking stickers. That's one of the main things I've been thinking about for years. People come in from all over towns and take stuff out of there. And some of them dump off stuff that's really not acceptable that comes from out of town. Why am I saying this? I've witnessed it. I've talked to people. I've had some disputes with people over this. Uh, and I really think I'm disappointed that, you know, that's not a concern, but I think it should be.
I don't think it's not that it's not a concern. Um, I think the concern is the volunteers. We don't want them confronting people and getting into situations that they need to be comfortable with volunteers because of it. Um, it's not a situation where they're employed. So we want to, you know, really keep these volunteers nurtured so that they want to come back to help us.
The volunteer, the fact that someone who's a police, who's a car, who's a sticker.
Further questions from the board? Make sense, any of you want us to make a motion to approve the plan? Anybody else in favor?
I'm going to approve the plan.
Or second?
I'll second.
Motion made by Leon, seconded by Tia for the discussion of the motion. All those in favor? Motion carries five nothing. Thank you very much. You've been on to that number four. Leon, come on up. You are the next contestant. Thank you very much. From the board and it's a pleasure to be back in front of you again with you guys. Okay, so.
So let's get this one. Track ceiling, uh, one bidder we had, um, that we put out in the, in the dow, to, uh, it's a little bit different the way I leave the bid out this year to ensure that the roads that I have listed are completed. In the past, he worked off a per day basis. And I really want to see the roads completed that I have listed out. So he gave me a full four roads. Uh, that's 2280. Only the, only the day. I think there was one late that came in, but he was.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve. Um, the highway superintendent engaging each gentleman down bid of 22,800 for a crack.
Second. A motion by Tia, seconded by Peter. Further discussion? Peter, you had it in earlier.
No, I was going to make a motion.
Very good.
No, I just wanted to. We reiterate what we have, we have said, um, so one, two, three, four, five of them, they don't have any words behind it. They're going to do the whole road? Unless five?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's only one that's a partial road and it's, uh, I think it's a road and also one who are cleaning up too long. I think it's a gravy road.
Yeah.
So this is just track ceiling. This is just strictly correct. This is provide you enough pushing to make sure that these roads do get there. Well, I suggested to him that I will accept nothing else. I would love to cut and check until I'm done, so. But it's up to him to provide pushing. I, I was clear with my, with my bid.
Yeah.
That they were in there entirely. And, you know, I, I honestly would like to see it done.
Sure.
I just, I, I have some issues that I, you know, personally don't want to get right into all the, everything else. But I just want to make sure the roads that I lay out are completed.
No, he's going to wet there, should be able to do some damage, right? Can't do it right?
No, no, he can't. He's going to be doing it later days. He seemed to be all right. He, he, he responded to my, my, my bid request and he was, he was a good person.
He was useful for us?
Yes, essentially he added extra data. He thought he could do it within the five days if he typically does, but, you know, there are a couple of them that can be thrown out, you know? You know, when you drive a road and you walk a road, you see a lot more grass when you go. And these guys are on foot.
Use these kind of people?
I have several many, many years, I can believe I'm rest in here. I want to say the last 10 years he played in that town. We have a motion by Tia, seconded by Peter. Further discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries five nothing. Next up is approval of RFP roadside mowing.
Okay, so we have three bidders there, Field Works, Thomas Herson, and Telco surprises. As you can see, Telco couldn't get hold of him on the phone, uh, but he gave a per hour, they asked to be per mile. I don't have, I don't believe, 85 miles of roads that we're going to mow. He took, uh, we used Field Works last year and he did an outstanding job. Uh, he was clean. I had no, no calls afterwards about debris in the road or otherwise. Yeah, well, I didn't have one call while waiting out on the ladder. I don't know what they, uh, my last, but let's face it, they were in the road. But we did, we thinned them a little bit, so. It happens, but that was, he did a great job. And, um, this year we'd like to increase it. Uh, but we can, you know, on that same idea, I can hold them back. I mean, if we get out to a point where, you know, you know, 15,000, but he's a perfect, he's a per mile basis. So we, uh, but once again, I want to get as many roads open back up as I can. The roadside mowing is one of those things that we haven't done a lot of in the past. And it was, we were getting behind. The highway department has done a lot of them with chainsaws and we've trimmed back quite enough of roads. So people will have to clean that on top of it. Then we ditch them with the excavator and we pull the stumps and everything and throw grass seed instead. So we don't have to do as much roadside mowing, but there's still a lot to do.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the bid from Field Works of New Hampshire at a rate of 20, $233.02 per mile at a total price of $19,000.
A motion made Tia. I'm going to give the tie with Peter. Uh, we'll give it to Leon. Right, the discussion on the motion.
Yeah. The bidder came in to be happy to come on the roadside once, one time.
Um, no, actually, they, they suggested, if you read it normally, they, they did get out like, uh, Field Works moved it out twice. He's reaching out, uh, over 10 feet, reaching, he goes right back to the wall. He takes him, I mean, to the point where I think sometimes it's a good work box back home. We can't see him, but, um.
So I, it says it makes one pass for the whole season. What the one time?
Uh, well, he's, uh, mowing includes the minimum mow width, the big, the horizontal mow. You can't do that in one pass. Mow is only five feet wide. So he's making, he's making roughly two passes on it on, on each side of the road.
That's just for the whole season?
Yeah.
Because he doesn't come back again?
No, because we, because we go about it once a year. Typically anytime between now and September. Further discussion on the motion? Ready to vote? All those in favor? Motion carries five nothing. Moving on to item number six, approval of RFP pressure grout. That is, uh, this is a little bit cross sticky, but this is how I came about. I mean, I received five gets. Um, obviously one of them was next stop or they were all the top or half of that. A little bit was custom crushing. Um, custom crushing came to town, had a pair a couple, two, three years ago where under Tom Weston's operation, he was here over a month and produced 60 yards. Um, I would recommend not using him again. Um, the other bidders, Fuzzy Brothers, Snook's Mobile Crushing at $5 per yard, and Eric Crush Tony at $5.35. He was headed to Crush Tony last year. He was sold there last year. He did an excellent job. No complaints in the reality amount of steel that he actually extracted out of our pile that he was fighting with. And my, my point of view is, is that the, um, the other two bidders, he crushed homes within 10% of the other two bidders. And, um, he, he employs a lot of people in this area. He also makes his, I mean, I, I have to look out, you know, I'm not throwing it, but he also makes his bid available to us and the rest of it. But we, I just get this money that there's some value there when you're talking the difference of about a thousand, couple, you know, 1500 bucks.
Yeah, I have a question.
I approve that we approve the recommendation of, uh, administrator that entering an agreement with Michael Crush Tony, they went on $35 for a few car.
I second.
Ready to call the?
I have a question. Um, so these guys are just crushing material, material that you already have.
That's correct.
What is that material?
Um, this particular year, the previous year I was in the pile was, um, some of it comes from some roadside work. A lot of it came from the construction area around, um, the highway department. Okay, uh, this year we gained probably four or 5,000 yards of material from RD Edman's relief from the Hall, Ave, Prospect Street, and Rush Road projects, and Western Ave projects. And all the excavated material on the roads went back to where our pit was stopped by. And at the same time, we then had sand gravel out of our own bank to that to get a blend. So I have a lot of asphalt, a lot of asphalt, a lot of hard debris, um, in there. All blended together. Crush Tony takes the time to blend everything as they see it coming off of the off the crusher. They add more sand to it if they take it two minutes. But they, they left us up a 4,000 yard pile last year and it really hammered down the road really, really nicely. So I'm very pleased.
So it's basically on one board?
Yeah. Yeah, all the, you know, I, I crush to an inch and a half. I don't crush down to three quarter. I think it builds, it makes a little out of road, gravel road, but you're living on a gravel road. So, and it, it, it binds up tighter with the larger scope. Yeah. I mean, a three quarter is always nicer to grade. It gives you a smoother finish, but the inch and a half stays where you put it.
The tunnel pitch or maybe some transportation?
Yeah. Okay, a motion by Leon and seconded by Tia of the abstaining from this vote. Ready to call the vote? All those in favor? All those opposed? One extension. Okay, item number seven, approval of RFP for favor.
You know, I'll, I'll set the flow of things, so I'll just point out, county administrator, point what we did, reread the recommendation on this section. They're all moving forward, paving, uh, crush.
Okay, so moving on to paving, as you can see, I have a very, I got, I have a very, um, busy schedule, I got to work over a lot of downtown work, I probably close up some of this downtown. And then also I'll move on to passing Hill Road. Correct. The, um, the stretch, you know, was roughly what, 14,000 in between or, or about, actually wasn't one minute. Anyways, the, 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 um, after speaking with basically the three contenders, RD David in there, speaking with them all, um, pointed out that they're anticipating raising manholes directly after the grind agreed to roll. And then they're going to work around those raised manholes with the base coat. And then over the top of them with the finish coat. It's kind of not the way it argued on it. And I wasn't too impressed with the way he was pointing it out. And, um, he would, by doing this, if he was going to be able to put down binder and then put down finish on the top on the same day. So in fact, he didn't allow for cat between clothes coats because he was anticipating putting, putting, um, one layer on top of the pile, which would have been fine. I'm not too, I'm not too impressed with the idea of putting the manholes in that way. But the way that I see the manhole should be going in, is that the manhole should be lowered, the, uh, regulation should be taken care of, the binder should be put down, and you cut the asphalt open, raise the manhole, you cement them, and then you put the finish on the top and it keeps them from settling in like they are out of Western Ave on Police Station out to Mill. So my recommendation is that we go with, um, GMI. And, um, I was really impressed with Allstate, to be quite honest with you. The price per project was a little high and they're not available until September. They're booked up. Uh, GMI has assured me that they would be able to get all downtown work done before the month of August. So that we can get, you know, we don't want to have that little situation that I had last year on a women week.
Right.
And it, it worked out good, but it was a little inconvenient, so. Timing is everything. So anyways, we're trying to avoid that. And at the same time, I also pointed out that I don't want them to grind passing Hill until I've completed all the drainage work. So I may not be ready for them. That kind of makes, they're going to have to move their, their equipment in and then back out. Because I, when I do pass and I want to have all my drainage in, they grind it and then they tape it and they, and we're out of there. I don't need any more shots. But I know that. Does that, you know that? I do know that. So it's going to be, uh, it's going to be a reclaiming compact and the groundwork around it should be complete. Be a very, maybe a weeks in between, you know, for me to go in and pick any rocks that they might find. Hopefully I find them all first. But my recommendation, I know, is on the high end, but I'm comfortable with what they produce. You know, obviously worked with them for the last two years. But it's the, uh, the end game that really matters, so.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve or afford the bid for the 2020 paving season, GMI asphalt in the amount of 276,000, some higher of $22.05 for the paving of Old Street, Union Street, Water Street, Pearl Street, Patterson Hill Road, or Boston?
Second. Motion by Tia, seconded by Leon, further discussion on the motion.
Further discussion on motion.
I'd like to point out, uh, to Mr. Oakley that I'm very, very pleased with the, the procedure that you've taken place with all of these bids. You followed the process. It worked well. It's not always the lowest bidder, like everybody seems to have that image that it's supposed to be. But you have good reason to choose the contractors that you did, even though they might be a little higher in price. We know what quality is and we depend and rely on you for that, so thank you.
Well, thank you very much. I mean, I spent a lot of time on the road with people. And it means like, you know, this is the most expensive, uh, round that we've got out there. And it will work. So I think it's important that we did the best job we can.
Further discussion on your stock.
Patterson Hill. That road is just falling apart pretty constantly, you know, falling apart. Are you going to try to do the whole road? And do you think there's any way you can do it to keep it?
I'm not, I am not doing the whole road. The, um, the flat section, uh, between, um, Quaker Street and let's say, uh, Kenny Moore's above his old house, if you're familiar with it.
Just as you're about to start coming down here?
Actually, a little, a little bit before that, I want to pick up. Right now, the asphalt, um, picks up right at that house. If, we're going to go back one more color, or one, uh, one more color crossing, which is going to be about another hundred and fifty, two hundred yards back, which basically is where the road goes from a fill to a cut. So if you drive the road, you're going across from Baker Street, that's a fill on the way across. And you're going to get to the far end and you're going to see where it starts making a cut in the end. That's where we're going to pick up the asphalt. Um... And we're going to be putting roadside drainage on, on, uh, well, on the ice side, obviously. And, and some portions of the road will see roads, uh, see drainage on both sides. And all the columns will be replaced. And, um... And a couple more installed. I'm working with two different landlords. Already got a, I've already got a, uh, easement from, um, Dan Ferguson, he's been able to put water across on the hillside. And I'm working with Chris Pauling right now to get the easement to put another pipe across there on the little side for better, for better, uh, drainage.
You saw it in the paper? And that, does this keep piecing up?
Uh, no, I, I, no. I, I don't know if there's any pros or cons to it. I've got those out there that's got fabric and the rocks to poke around and throw at anybody, so I guess I'd be careful of the fabric. I think that the, um... A lot of it comes down to just general payments. Get, get that drainage off of me. I think that's more important than whatever, you know? But I'll, I'll look into it, but, um...
This one would make a much longer?
Further discussion?
Can we try that at People Hill next year?
Uh, no, at People, I wouldn't be one of those worrying about the fabric. That's, that's, that's a fair amount of revenue I own. If you really look at it, you know? A little drainage on that as well. But I think it was, I think, you know, talking with R.D. Edmonds, um, when he was here. And that was one of the key things, working with contractors downtown that they do with the Western Ave. But I was picking the range a ton, paying attention to what they're, what they're, you know, how they're doing their layout, right? And I was, you know, impressed with it sometime, you know, taking down notes. And, uh, and also building, also building, um, relationships that I could call them and agents, their opinions on what, you know, what's work, what works and what, what doesn't.
So is GMI and R.D. Edmonds in the same company?
They are the same company. All right, now, GMI bought Alvin and the Esse.
Further discussion? Ready to call vote? All those in favor? Motion carries five nothing.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Are you finding the bidding process fairly robust?
Um, it's better this year than it was obviously last year. And, and I think that, you know, when I write these, when I write these bids, I'll get a little bit. I'm still a little agreeing with the else to be the person that made it. Sometimes I catch myself in my own track. And then you can go back and say, well, next year, we're going to word that a little bit differently than when we get sure of, you know, that the eyes are on it and the fees crossed.
Sure. What's the percentage of price decrease on asphalt?
Well, it didn't actually be, uh, not a lot of it. They basically all said the same thing. We brought in our contracts in February before numbers started dropping out. So, you know, there's, essentially, you know, they, they, they were, they feel that they're bound. I was hoping maybe, maybe next year, if the prices hold down, maybe we'll see a little reduction. One thing I would like to point out that, um, in the, in the event that we go back to town meeting, an opportunity is to pass the warrant for the road procedures on back. I won't put out that most, most comments out there are dry. And, um, Josh Stevens, who was voted on that charge, has pointed out that, you know, he would be willing to start at any point in time if we need to move forward. If we can get pipe and ground or dry services, you know? In my line of work, they never make any money playing the part. We dust the lot, the more the dustier, sometimes the better. Yeah. Eat the dust. Good for you.
Do you see any guy that does these, train cars where they fly here too?
Um, some of them. You know, chainsaw, stuff like that, but, um, it, it's totally their, their call, but most of which, you know, we're doing a lot in house training. Learning a lot, but we're, uh... I have a good crew. We're very pleased with the product that they put out. They, they, they're learning, you know, learning how to keep making out, so. We are on board and we have been since, I don't know, sometimes I'm in the spring. Um, but it, it works well for them. You know, we get, we get a long run of six, six to, six to four every day, so. Yeah. We get a good run out and, um, but they, they, you know, and and if you look at it, you know, you add the five days, and that's one more start, one more shut down. So you, you gain some, lose some, but I get, my crew is, is performing. They, you know, we've been doing a lot of, a lot of ditching. We did, uh, we just finished up the big gravel projects up on Moss Road. Some of them we got to gravelly, but then we ditched both sides of the road and cleaned some trees. We've been doing a lot of, we've been doing a lot of, uh, tree pruning along. Like we did, um, last, just the other day, we did, uh, Stone Hatch. And today, we're working down on, um, Water Street. We did Pearl Street, now Jalen Street, because we're already working down there. So let's continue and wipe up all of Water Street and get it open back up. We can't get it, you know, we cannot be open all the way into Skyline because we don't have the ability to reach up to that. But we can get everything to normally, you know, in our trucks, so. And so far, the public has been very good to us, you know? We've been trying to explain my position to them and, you know, let them understand that, you know, I can cut, I can cut the pop of the trees off that are overhand in the road. But they're going to look at it, or I can cut it down low and go, you know?
Very good. Thank you. Um, along those lines, with being so dry out, do you want to pursue changing out some culverts?
Do we do all?
I thought you said that, that was the plan.
Uh, on Western Ave?
Well, if I had time, with this, with this little mechanism that I got in front of me now, I want to.
Well, and if we look at the, the dump is already approved for that hour, like nine hundred thousand, right? For the Western Ave project, wasn't that encompassed in?
Was that?
Wasn't the culvert replacement encompassed in the construction bid that you approved?
Yeah. The, the biggest problem you have out there on Western Ave is that the state increased the size of the culverts almost four times. Um, the rocks out there are as big as my excavator. So I anticipate they're going to be doing some blasting and a lot of rock. You take in some areas where we have two-foot diameter pipe, five-foot diameter pipe. The head walls on those, on those pipes are going to require craning if you want. And to be honest with you, if I'm doing maintenance in town, the type, the tie up, what's going to take from me hours out there to do the pipes? I mean, some of them are a problem, because a couple of them are there and that's a piece of.
Right. Do you think we, don't we have the money to sub that out?
Well, we, we've already approved a bid for nine hundred thousand for the other portion of Western Ave if we get the money at town meeting. But Leo's crew, along with Leo, has Patterson Hill Road, along with other roads that also need culvert replacement.
I've got, I've got probably, um... I've got culverts all over, billboard road that I've got to, um, coupon road. I've got, I've got a list of stuff in that we're moving forward on. And that being said, I was just under the assumption that that contract that we, that we really put out was going to become us the work that's going to be done. But in the event that it doesn't, we will have to get on, obviously.
Yeah. Now, I was thinking about just if you could lock hard enough.
Well, if I got caught up, that would be one thing, but it'll, it'll catch up in this. I, I'm still, I'm still hitting hotspots.
No, I, I guess what I was implying is, is could you release that portion of the contract if you have the funds in your budget for them to pursue the culvert or a garage drop? My question.
Um, that would be, I guess that would come out to the finance officer and, and, and T.A.'s sitting down with a free of money hammer out. I don't, I don't know. I can understand what you're saying, so if, if they're you working off a unit price, it would say, oh, you've already accepted the contract. And if there is additional money, can, can they come in and start and then do passwork over the culverts? I would not have a problem.
That's what I... Did you not understand what he's saying?
I, and I understand, but we, we only have quarter to five thousand left in the Svenko Trust. Right? We just approved this one. This, if we move forward, we've started to work on Western Ave, we need the additional seven fifty to finish and complete that contract.
Oh, yeah, if we would have to. You're absolutely right.
So because we awarded the bid to them and that encompasses it. So once we start the work, we're obligated to continue.
You could also have a conversation with them and say, are they willing to come here and do the culverts in line with the conditions that are dropped? If I recall on the bid, the culverts were about a hundred and five?
I, I, I guess I, I didn't really, I don't have that information in front of me and I didn't sit down and, and refresh my memory, but I, I understand exactly where they're coming from. I don't think the path is, but I think what it's going to have to be is it's going to have to be a gamble between, um, Stevens Construction.
Sure.
And the board of selectmen and myself before, you know, so that everybody's in the same page. That way, well, I understand what Mr. Spook was saying too, is that you're, you're, you're now starting a commitment. Are they willing to start after the money runs out until we give them money?
Right. So the total bid price, based on what I'm looking at, is nine hundred and four hundred thousand.
What were the culverts?
So I have listed, uh, let's see. Just for the six inch height, the under grade, that was close to a hundred grand, just there.
And then, then, then you have culverts, so will you really be out there with the under grade of culverts?
How much were the culverts? There's what, seven culverts in there or any more?
There's more than that.
I think seven, seven of them might be.
Did you say D O T designed it?
Designed it?
Did you say?
No, your B E S. B E S, well, because it's a shoreline, a shoreline burn that go through. So I recall that we replaced. I was actually to the point, I was actually to the point with B E S and I, I told Mike Biggall there was one pipe that he, that they went from a two-foot diameter pipe to a five-foot diameter pipe. Thirty-inch diameter jumper pipe, seven halfway down.
D E S is making this?
Yeah. They, they, they have made some huge changes in their, in their, in their evaluation of what they, what they allow, what they don't. So the end product was, is I just told Mr. Biggall is that you, you, that I would accept the five-foot diameter, which it's a five-foot diameter, but then they put a foot of stone in the bottom to give it the real feel of the fishy.
Oh, so it's a round collar?
Well, no, it's a round collar, but then it's got a layer of stone in the bottom, yeah. Which is fine, um, but the, but, but my point was, what time bigger than what was there? Do we really need thirty-inch diameter alongside it? And the end product was, as I expressed to Mr. Biggall, is that, you know, my, my point of view was, we don't need to change any of those pipes. We can pay over, but the appropriate thing is to change it. So the end product was is that the E S allowed us to go forward with just a five-foot diameter pipe with no thirty-inch overfill.
So the approximate just for the culverts would be about a hundred and sixty thousand? And that's not going to include any traffic control?
Well, the traffic control would be limited anyways because we're, I've, I've given them almost a degree of life to close the road. I have no traffic. I don't have to have traffic. That road can be closed, as, as I do a lot of roads when we're doing piping. It can be closed in the morning and reopened in the afternoon. As long as there's no school bus traffic or, you know, or otherwise, um, there is no, there doesn't need to be true traffic.
Okay. All right. Well, just.
I, I, I can throw that conversation out if you'd like.
Yeah, but you also have to look at, if you start separating out these contracts and they have to move equipment in and then potentially move equipment out when we go, if we don't get what we're looking for past the town meeting? And it could potentially cost us a little bit more.
Well, it could, but the, but it doesn't hurt to have the conversation. True. You know? Just open the door and say, what would you be willing to do? If, you know, are they quiet and are they busy? They were, they were kind of playing on it, kind of wishing they were doing. At this point in time, I would, I'd be, you know, I'm open-minded to look at.
Those words just coming here from?
Yeah, I know, I hate to say it. Open-minded.
All right.
So.
Thank you very much.
If you don't mind, I'm going to be fee if you have more further questions for me to see. Once again, I want to thank you guys for hanging in there and, and meeting tonight. It's stuff right there.
Very good.
Did you want to make any comments on my hearing for that, talking about stream crossing assessments? Uh, did you want to make any comments about that? I know you had, you had a discussion.
What was that again?
The stream crossing assessment that the E S wants to come in with culverts?
Um, I think Eric said.
I think.
Yeah. They were telling me on the day, so I don't think we really have a choice. I mean, we, I, I, I do have my opinion, but I, I don't think that, um... I don't think it's, it's a necessity by our, by, by our standards, but I, I don't think they're taking, I don't think you're asking permission. I think they're just going to move forward to our, and, um, and this is essentially, um, Environmental Services is going through a survey on our culverts on stream, it's stream crossings. And to, to identify which ones, what condition you're in, um, and their environmental impact as far as, you know, flood capabilities or the...
Or threat to wildlife.
Uh, yeah, they want to know how all the fishes get through. It's funny that, you know, I, I think of the areas like, um, I can't wait to see some of the, what, what they turn outside. You definitely go on, uh, Flings Road, I just traveled down that stream hole and basically it's a drop on the outlet and you have the inlet, it's, it's a whole pipe and forever. Sometimes those trucks keep on finding their way upstream. Must be the storm or something out there or something like that. But for one reason or another, it seems to work. I, I don't know. You can bring it up, but I, I really don't think it was, uh... I have my family, but sometimes I'm not the boss of it.
Okay. I'll cut you off right there.
Thank you very much. I don't know what are any discussions, I, Mark Grant.
Yeah? Or Joe?
This question, Joe Clark from Grant Company. Yeah, I had a meeting with Saatchi and Susan on, uh, Saturday. A lot of information from Saatchi on it, a bunch of emails and the process that all went through. And some of the issues that came up. I was answering to Joe and calling him, calling him the invoices that we need to, uh, move this along. Um, and we need to figure out how to, just to team together that can do the monitoring every year and maybe do a little back check and monitor, um, in the past. We, we mentioned it, Dr. Grant. Do that. Let's let you know how it goes next time.
Very good. Anything else? All right, who we are, item number nine, acceptance of force, like on the public hearing method, maybe, maybe. This was a Zoom meeting. Heads, please. This is page ninety-four, for those who are following the home games.
Yes, on the column, column number one, where it says, may you see President, President, please, we have one.
Further. I'm hearing any, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Seconded, motion made by Tia, seconded by Peter, further discussion on May nineteenth minutes, all those who favor? Motion carries five, moving right along to the non-public minutes. Of May nineteen.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Your second?
Second.
Motion made by Tia. Seconded by Peter, further discussion. All those who favor? Motion carries five. Page number eleven, acceptance of Boris' work on the public hearing minutes, June two. This again was a Zoom meeting.
On page four, middle paragraph, under signage and parks, paragraph starts with "he stated", three lines in, it says golf bowl, it should be golf hall.
Further edits on the public minutes of June two. I'm hearing any, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion made by Saka Hooper, seconded by Selectman Park, further discussion, all those who favor? Motion carries five. Department report, title twelve, Joe.
So again, just as everyone, we do have our department reports in there, if you wanna take a look at them, just to give you an idea of what's going on in your department. I have nothing to report on.
Page number thirteen is the Town Minister.
So, um, we've been working on Town Hall appointments, it seems to be going well. Um, we've been using a program called Apartment Plus that allows people to access online appointments. Um, I'm looking, I'm gonna be hopefully with the Board's approval, I'm looking to open up Town Hall completely on June twenty-ninth, which is when the government's opening everything, including used parks. My only concern, obviously, is our lobby area is tight, which is one of the reasons we're going to the appointments. So we're just gonna have to obviously keep an eye on people, traffic coming in and out of Town Hall, especially your local.
Um, Joe, other communities have already opened their Town Halls, why can't we open our Town Hall, so we're in our full throes open? A lot of it's surrounding communities, and I know some people are frustrated with the appointment schedule, since there are thirty-minute increments at this point, so why couldn't we, you know, open it next week? Since Monday?
If the Board would like it to, again, my concern right now is, is our lobby is small, and we have multiple people in there at any time. It's tough to adhere to a six-foot distance, which is why, obviously, people still apply social assistance.
Well, we can always ask that, if you see two people within the lobby, please wait at, you know, in that festival area, prior to the swinging doors, it's all, um, their business, that's decided, and they can proceed.
I'm not happy to do it with the Board's orders.
If you could put some lines, if you could put some lines or some symbols on the floor, letting people know that, you know, somebody in line would say something.
What is your proposed date, Joe?
My original proposed date was June twenty-ninth, which seems to you and everything else open up.
I think everything else is pretty much open up at this point.
Peter?
Well, I was gonna say, I support what the Town Minister is recommending, I mean, we got on him, he's in the building full-time, he has a staff and a trade job, and I think his advice is only welcomed by me, anyway, I would like to support what he recommends.
Very good, further questions on that? Are you gonna put that as form of a motion here, or?
Yes.
I had another question too, but would you consider making a, would you have a mask?
So, we have not been making mask mandatory, but people are wearing them, they're sitting at the front door, and everybody is at the Town Hall.
Well, right now, the fall is for, it could be June twenty-ninth, I hear on the Selectmen saying to move it up, I hear another Selectman saying, keep it as is. But the Selectman that wants to move it up.
I'm gonna make a motion that we open Town Hall on June twenty-second.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Scott. Further discussion on motion?
Our Town Hall has individual office spaces that are, you know, pretty secure, we also have epoxy glass, I believe, that has been installed. Um, we also have sanitizing, um, which, you know, can be used, and I think people understand at this point the rules and procedures that have been put in grocery stores and every place else, and I think people respect that. Um, and our Town Hall has been closed for a few months now, and we really need to get back up.
Further discussion on motion?
I hear the motion, he did that stand here, right?
I'm making a motion to open Town Hall on Monday, June twenty-second.
Instead of June twenty-ninth, as the Town Minister recommends?
They would still have to increase some, 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 procedures put in place, like the distancing, and for the strong recommendation of people with masks, who wouldn't have been there. And I would need an end date to that, before we say that.
Okay, uh, I will stick with the original, um, recommendation of the Town Minister, according to Peter's comments, so, uh, if there was no further discussion on the motion, did I read? Scott did, that's right, sorry. Out in Zoom land, well, we don't normally take comment during a motion, but if the Board permits me to ask.
I'd say no, I'd say no also, that's the, the radius.
So, I'm not sensing. Okay, sorry about that, down in Zoom land. We have a motion by Tia to move this opening of Town Hall up by one week.
With conditions.
With conditions, and it's been seconded by Scott Ofsco. Further discussion on the motion, ready to call, all those who bear? All those opposed? Motion carries three to two.
So let me, you know, it's next week, and put sound, and the information to be, to be used, and to, basically, have them, the toll of its best to them to do that.
Very good, continue to tell the first quarter of the report.
Um, during the, um, May nineteenth meeting, the Board voted to move forward the pressure water stipends. I just wanted to report back that we haven't received the money from Stair already, and it's like, well, a suite to all of the responsibilities that they have to pay, um, for that program. Um, with summer time coming up, I want to discuss with the Board how they felt about changing the meeting schedule. Currently, we're thinking if the Board is okay with it, moving forward the meeting in July fifteenth, twenty twenty, at three-thirty, which would be prior to the town meeting. That night at six o'clock, and then another meeting August eleventh, and then resuming almost every month.
Sounds good, would you be my consensus on that?
Yeah.
Here.
Hometown Hero Benders, this was approached back in August sixth, two thousand and nineteen, you had a presentation from the Hometown Hero Program. Um, during that meeting, sorry, sorry, during that meeting, the Board voted to move forward and charge the American Union to charge all the issue sizes of it. I've been speaking to Hometown Heroes Program, they haven't had much luck with the American Union right now, discussing how to move forward with this. I have Scotty, the senior, he is gonna be bringing in the next meeting, now the end of the meeting to open up to them as well, where they're able to move forward with that. So hopefully, we'll have a presentation coming up this summer for Hometown Heroes, and the American Union College, and I'm on the floor as well. I just wanted to update everybody on that. Um, again, as Leo kind of mentioned, we're talking about the state of the game strategy as it's coming through, we're doing a stream crossing assessment, the idea is to check culverts. Um, the idea behind it was just to check vulnerability in these culverts, so I'd really want to make the Board aware of that. July third, Town Hall is closed, you know, the members of the Penn State, July fifteenth is town meeting at six o'clock.
Very good, any questions for Joe? Thank you, sir, thorough, as always. Selectmen reports, let's start with the left side, Mr. Osmond? First plumb, nothing to report, Tia?
Nothing to report.
Peter?
Nothing also, none of my committee members.
Leon?
Little.
Nice. All right, at this point in the evening, it is time for public comment number two, for any members that wish to address the Board, please keep your comments brief and to the point. Please signal through the Zoom platform, either to Joe or Tia, and we will unmute your mic, so. Any questions out there in Zoom land?
I've been nothing.
Nothing, Joe.
Page one? Place? I'm hearing any public commentary, we'll shut down the public commentary section, and we will entertain the vote for chair, unless there's anything else.
I'll make a motion for chair.
Seconded by Peter, all those who bear? Motion carries. Thank you all for attending the next meeting, and we appreciate you coming on.